Oh. Okay.
Well, we've been in a lot of stuff that people have been reading on me. I've heard there are different ones. Yeah, but I'm more of a, if you're listening, it's just like one copy and then it's like. But I think the game is starting every minute.
Okay.
That's the point.
Okay. Six o'clock. Yeah, I think we're gonna get started on time. Just want to point out that tonight, we are actually having two meetings. This first meeting was set up when, at a point where we thought that the second meeting was gonna go very long because of one of the items that was on it. And so we figured we'd get this agenda over with so that everybody wouldn't have to sit through that. And by the way, just if you're here for the car wash item on, at the seven o'clock meeting, for anybody who's here for that, that item has been pulled. So it's not gonna be on the agenda tonight. So, I'd like to call, yes, ma'am. Okay. It's permanently withdrawn. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Okay, I would like to call to order the August tenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. meeting of the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Griffin?
Here.
Grimes?
Poe?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Rivera? Rodriguez?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. Item two minutes, the minutes are gonna be handled during the regular meeting, the seven o'clock meeting. Item three is audience time. This is an opportunity for anybody here who would like to address the commission on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. Items that are on the agenda will be, you will have an opportunity to participate in that. Make comments, ask questions, because that is, that is a public hearing. So if you are here to talk about any of the items on the agenda, you can wait until it's actually being presented at the hearing, at the hearing tonight. Is there anybody here that wants to address the commission? At this point. Okay. Moving on. Item four, old business. Do we have any old business that we need to discuss at this time? I don't believe so. Item five, new business. Five A zoning calendar. Let me see, these, there are two items that are for the same project. Is that correct? Next two, okay. Zoning calendar number twenty-seven, twenty-three, and twenty-seven, twenty-four. These are both requests regarding the same project. So they will be presented as one presentation, however, when we vote on them, we will be voting on them separately. Zoning calendar number twenty-seven, twenty-three is a variance for the fence height at six hundred Lakers Drive. And zoning calendar number twenty-seven, twenty-four, site plan for a permanent casino facility at six hundred Lakers Drive. And I would like to ask staff to make their presentation.
Okay, as you stated, twenty-seven, twenty-three, and twenty-seven, twenty-four will be for the same project. The first one being the variance for the fence height. And the second one, the site plan for the permanent casino. You may be familiar with the location of the temporary casino by American Place, located on Found Square, just off of Waukegan Road and one-twenty. The temporary casino is here, where it's labeled the new. The new permanent.
Chart here that, back of the room, that everybody can see, can look at.
Let me see.
Yes, I'm talking about.
So the permanent would go on the southeast side of the, where the temporary casino is. The applicants did provide a zoning analysis that you see in front of you. It's also in your packets. I do want to point out one thing, that we asked them to disregard the floor area ratio as this is something that we are looking to eliminate in our unified development ordinance. So we asked them to disregard that, but do follow the setbacks and height restrictions. Everything here complies with our zoning ordinance, except for the fencing. And that is for the fencing height. The top image shows the type of fence that currently exists in the temporary casino. It just, it goes throughout the property. And so they look, they're looking to continue this type of fence, six-foot black metal fence throughout the property for security purposes. Our current zoning ordinance requires a four-foot ornamental fence in the front and in corner side of any property, sorry. Any interior side and rear yards where require, can go up to six, or sorry, eight feet for this district. So since this is going throughout the property, we asked them to apply for a variance since it is above the four-feet requirement. The second fence that they are putting up is actually thirteen feet high. And this is off of the mansion area that they are proposing. This is, again, for security purposes. Those that are going to the mansions are the only ones that are allowed to cross this gate. So the style that they're going for is more of a prairie style. And our architect Frank Lloyd Wright was known for this type of style. It's known for their emphasis on nature and simplicity, and emphasizing on the horizontal rather than the vertical. The materials they're proposing just follows that type of style with the brick, wall caps, and stucco wall. Here are some renderings that they have provided, again emphasizing on the horizontal instead of the vertical. These images are showing the port cochere, again highlighting the proposed materials of the metal roof, aluminum windows, aluminum door system, the stucco walls, metal roof, and granite stone walls. These are more elevations. The mansion is currently in progress, so they don't have the final, what it's going to look like. But what they have provided is the footprint and the site plan. So that is what you are currently looking at for approval. Again, more renderings, and everything here is on your packets. So just to walk you through the site plan that you'll be looking at to approve or deny. If we look on the east side, the N is the entrance to the mansion, right next to the N, between N and M. This is where the thirteen-foot gate will be going. So you'll see the drive going to F, which is the port cochere for the mansion, which is E. If you look up on the north side, H, that's the main entrance currently for the temporary. It will stay for the permanent as well. I, just south to that, that will also stay. And currently, I believe that is used for the employee mostly. So when you go down H, you'll go to A, where they propose a higher elevation and mostly because this is where pedestrians and the traffic of cars will cross. So that would just improve safety for the pedestrians and everyone else. So when you go down A onto C, you'll go to the roundabout where it can lead you to F, which is the main entrance to the casino. They are proposing a water feature, and that is L, right next to F. Here. D being the casino. B, another raised crosswalk for the pedestrians. K is the casino loading, which has their own entrance off of Lakers Road. And I believe G is, last one, it's the stormwater basin that they are proposing. I do want to point out O. O is the entrance that is shared by this strip mall that currently has Marshalls and Buffalo Wild Wings. They will share that entrance. O also leads to the back J, which is the venue loading. Just to compare the location of the temporary and the permanent, we have on the west side, the temporary and the footprint of the permanent on the right. They also looked into landscaping. They are too code, but they, we currently require an island for every ten parking spaces. They did not necessarily follow every ten, but they highlighted where the green shows where it's less than seven or less parking spaces, but still provided a landscaping island. The orange shows where they exceeded the ten parking spaces. But when you calculate the green and the orange, it comes up to being even. So again, there are two applications for this project. One being zoning calendar twenty-seven, twenty-three for the variance. You have two options here. If approval of the variance would be required in order for the site plan to be issued, denial by the city council would result in the petitioner proposing a shorter fence and gate or operating the facility without one. So those are two options for the variance application. For the site plan application, if you were to recommend approval, staff does recommend these conditions. These were also in the site plan approval for the temporary that still is appropriate for this site plan. Number one being compliance with all local, state, and federal laws. Number two, complying with additional requirements under the B-two district and Western Gateway redevelopment overlay district. Number three, finalizing the fencing and applying for a fence permit. Number four, finalizing any signage plans and, again, applying for a sign permit that will be reviewed by Planning and Zoning and the Building Department. Number five, all building code, engineering, and life safety requirements must be satisfied by the approval of the Building, Engineering, and Fire Departments. Number six, renew any necessary licenses for business, for the business and the location. Seven, installing building enhancements such as security cameras, lighting, and other improvements to ensure safety of all employees and customers. Number eight, any noise that is generated by the permanent casino should not be audible from any adjacent properties. Number nine, coordinating with city's, with city's traffic consultant on an ongoing basis. Number ten, they must provide on and off, on and or off-site traffic management personnel. Number eight, the petitioner must commission transportation engineering professionals to monitor on and off-site traffic and parking activity during the surge of opening activity. Following a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the application will move forward to city council for renew, for review. Denial by the council would result in the existing temporary casino to remain until another site plan for the permanent casino is approved or their time with Illinois Gaming Board expires. Any questions?
Any questions from commissioners? Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I'd like to refuse myself, because our firm has a prior relationship with petitioner.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Mr. Haynes?
We saw a picture there of the six-foot fence. I don't recall seeing anything showing what the thirteen-foot fence looks like. Are they the same?
It's here at the bottom. So it's a gate. The highest point being thirteen feet.
Okay. Me? Whatever you want to share, I'm willing to listen.
And you are, no? Okay, yeah, I was asked to ask anybody who comes up to speak, please don't touch the microphone. It is adjusted, so it should pick up from any angle. Okay, can you hold just a second, please? Okay, I think it would be better if we wait till you make your presentation. Right now, this is the city staff's opportunity to present their position on this, okay? Yeah, you'll have an opportunity to do that, okay? Thank you very much. Any commissioners have questions of city staff? Okay. Okay, all right. Okay. Next step, we're following a new order. So it's kind of out of order from what we've been used to. Next one is gonna be for the applicant to make a statement, so I guess this is your time. Who is gonna be presenting for the petitioner? Are you the only two?
Uh, yeah, so, but we have four of us are here.
Okay, well, why don't I swear you all in in case any of you are asked to provide any information? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and the truth? Okay, please proceed, and as you speak, please identify yourself and your affiliation to the project.
Retail that a lot of areas like this are drawn up as. But it's really back to that intent of really making sure that those accesses, the routes, and everyone knows where they're going. We don't have confusion between both pedestrians and vehicles. We're providing a good environment both as people are coming into the site and really experience the, experiencing the feel of this permanent casino. Isabel did show that phase one plan that showed both the temporary and the permanent. That is something that the design team, we're very cognizant of that as we're developing everything forward in this plan. We have made some changes to that in terms of the things that we anticipate being open when the temporary is still operation, but the permanent is under construction. So we're ever evaluating and making improvements to that plan to ensure that when the permanent opens, it really does feel like a new user experience rather than that we just have a bunch of temporary stuff with pardon our dust signs on it. So we are evaluating this and still making quite a bit of changes to it. Currently, right now, one big change that we have proposed with Full House that we're working through the design team on is we are looking to have vehicular access into the Port Cachere when the permanent opens before the temporary is demolished. So that is one change in here that I did want to point out. And another big change with the site plan that we're currently working with is stormwater detention. We showed three possible basins in the current site plan that's submitted. We still are evaluating how we're going to manage stormwater on site. We know what the requirements are. We have the stormwater report that was approved as part of the temporary that we need to comply with throughout construction. So we're still currently working to figure out the best way to manage that as this project's developed. So the stormwater basins may be in the location shown here, they may not be, but we'll work with city staff as part of that review as we, as we progress through the design and the permitting of this to make sure that we're complying with everything that we said we're going to when we develop the temporary and making sure we're meeting all those requirements going forward. But overall, I don't think there's much else regarding the site that we really wanted to touch on, so we're here to, happy to answer questions and we appreciate your thoughts and willingness to listen to our presentation.
Thank you. Any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have a comment.
Please.
I like the Frank Lloyd Wright style. It's very refreshing. So I like your finishes, all of that. Very nice to see.
Thank you.
And I'm interested in your stormwater retention. Are you, I know you have a fountain. Are you doing, are you doing fountains in the retention basins or what are you thinking?
So at this time, we're not planning on doing detention within the basins. It was something that we looked and spent a lot of time kind of figuring out. Unfortunately, because of the grading of the site and the experience that we want elevating up to the casino, that fountain is up at the grade of the finished floor of the casino and all our stormwater kind of needs to be down the hill. So we unfortunately, we're not able to really make that work to the level that we want. It's right now, it is just, just a fountain and a water feature.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else here who would like to speak out in favor of this request? Yes, please come forward. Is there anybody else who's going to want to speak in support of this? Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the detestable and you're about to give the truth, whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I, I know I'll get a chance to ask questions later.
And although, we all know who you are, please give your name.
Oh, sorry. I'm Lynn Florian. I had a couple of questions. Can you put that rendering back up? Is it okay if I ask questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the fencing we're talking about, is that going to go around the retention or ponds also? Because if they're down low, I'm envisioning someone, you know, like going down the hill and falling in the pond or whatever. So is that the same fencing around the ponds?
Yeah, the, the fencing does go around the perimeter of the pond. Currently, we don't have a plan to fence all the way around every single pond on all four sides, but we are, the, the hill that goes down to it will not be to the extent that it is today. It will be designed, you know, to meet the ordinances and permit requirements of the city. And if we do have standing water in it, there's standing water in the pond currently out there today, but that's not the intent that's there right now because of erosion control practices that we need to implement while we have actively disturbance on the site. But it will be a dry bottom basin, so there won't be water. And areas that are, have water will have either a depth of less than a foot or a safety shelf where if someone was to end up to fall in there, they would have quite a bit of waves before the water gets too deep.
You can drown in about two inches of water, but... Do, are codes, do they require fencing all the way around? Okay. Um, that might be something we want to think about changing. And then my other question, the way the entrances, it's furthest away from most of the parking. Was, was that just, was that intentional? Was that just the way it had to work out because of the fountain?
So for the entrances on here, we have the H, the I are really the two main entrances that everyone will be using to access the casino. And the reason they're situated where they are, one is circulation on site. The intention is we really wanted the main roads where the predominant vehicle movements will be. We wanted to separate that from the parking. Wherever you have high vehicle movements, you kind of want to have that so you don't have the opportunity of someone backing out in front of you as you're navigating into the site. So the intended traffic movements here is that, that H up on top is where people would enter. They would come to that area A, which is in the middle of the site, which is an elevated intersection that will have some decorative features, some additional pavers, possibly colored concrete. We're working through with the landscape architecture team on exactly what that looks like. But then from there, people would either drive forward to go through the roundabout to go up to the Port Cachere, whether they would be dropping someone off. It could be Ubers or Lifts dropping people off. It could be people dropping their car off for valet. Or people could go left or right to enter the actual parking lots to park and then walk into the casino. So the, the traffic movement, the entrances are designed in a way to try to limit the impacts and the conflicts that we have with pedestrians on site and really get people to where they need in the most efficiently possible.
I really meant F. The entrance to the casino, the people walking in the door.
Walking in, yeah.
Not the traffic coming in.
Okay.
The people walking in the door. It's, it's on this end of the casino instead of like being in the middle or being close to the parking lot.
Yeah, and so F's the Port Cachere, so that's obviously the main entrance that people will see. There will be other entrances to the casino. There's, we don't call it out on this plan, but on the north side of the casino, kind of right underneath, forgot what letter it is. It's the elevated crosswalk. Yep, that one, B. So there is another entrance to the casino there that anyone parking in that northern lot would likely use. And anyone that's going to the Port Cachere that's in the parking lots to the west, there's a sidewalk that we have that'll get them up there as well. So there will be a couple.
Okay, I didn't understand without one of the other.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all, sorry.
Okay.
Those were my two questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions on all of the Florian?
Can you explain what an elevated crosswalk is and this elevated intersection A? I don't know what that means.
Sure. So in, in traffic planning in urban environments, there's studies that they've come out that the elevated crosswalk in A is similar to, we have a few of them on the temporary site right now that are just a lot narrower. They're essentially larger, more visual speed bumps to slow down cars. But what makes an elevated intersection, which is A, unique is the entire intersection is going to be elevated. So as cars are coming up to it, they'll have to drive up anywhere from four to eight inches, depending on the grading. It changes the color of the pavement, so it's a visual cue for them. There will also be different elements along the curves that really give them cues that they're not on a highway to slow down. And then it also, when people are crossing the streets there, they're raised up, so they're more visible from a vehicular standpoint as well. So that's what, that's what's proposed there right now and that's our intent for that area.
Mr. Griffin.
I'm a little hesitant on some of the changes that have been made. I see that the parking has been cut by 266 spaces. That's the first thing. The second thing, there's no hotel. I mean, this is a completely different plan than what we were presenting. And there has not been a traffic study and my court done that?
Okay, so a few things, Commissioner. The, the changes to the plan have actually increased the plan. The hotel, and this is maybe, we should have clarified this earlier, when we mentioned the mansion, that is the hotel. So the mansion is the 20-suite, high-end luxury villas hotel that was always presented. So that's, that's what you see there as letter E.
Who's going to stay there?
Hopefully, hopefully some good gamblers.
I don't know.
And then I, yeah, so, so that is, that was in the original proposal and that is still there today. And I, I apologize, I forgot you have, you have another question, I don't remember what it was. Parking spaces, this is the parking that we've got on there right now with, with this plan. We, we feel this, this is more than adequate. We do have preliminary plans for a phase two parking garage that we're going to add at the appropriate time. And so obviously, if, if our parking lot is full, that's, that's a very good problem that we want to have and we'll make sure to add parking to the site at that point.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we are premature because this is back in court. I don't even know whether we should be discussing this. I hate to see you spending money that may change.
Chair, if I may address this point. So this is before the board, just on consideration of the site plan, the variances. Anything outside of the standards you're required to consider, including pending litigation or finances or anything that is outside of the specific standards, wouldn't be appropriate for consideration. So as for what may or may happen in court, it's not before this board.
Well, we shouldn't consider anything.
Should not consider anything other than what is set forth in our ordinance.
We're just here for planning and zoning issues.
I don't know what I'm hearing. But there's confusion.
The legal matters that are in litigation now are not something that we are involved in considering. This is just part of us or our recommendation regarding the zoning, planning and zoning issues.
If people are going to start construction based on what we say and do, that's not there either.
So Commissioner Griffin, I'll say this, to the extent that litigation affects the construction that is underway, that is a risk that the applicant would have to take. If there's some sort of injunction, some sort of order from court that orders them to, to do something that is outside of their, their plans or interests, that's just, that's a risk they undertake. However, our recommendation to the city council and the city council's approval of their request is, is outside of that, is outside of that consideration.
Well, they didn't do the right thing in the first place.
Anything else from commissioners?
I'd just, Commissioner Bill. I'd like to make a comment on that the presentation you've given is, and I'm hearing what another commissioner said, basically you're looking at pedestrian safety, visual impact. I think it's a very well-prolonged plan. Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. I just wanted to mirror basically what the other commissioner had said about the, the presentation that we have here in front of us is basically we're looking at pedestrian safety, we've looked at security, we've looked at parking, and we have the insight of what you're doing here. I think it's a well-laid out plan and I think it's something more capable to be controlled of too. It'll be part of our image and going forward. Just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'd just like to read into the record two letters of support that we received for this project for zoning calendar number 2723. The first one, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, George Neri Kudaiel, who lives at 2290 Hallie Court in Norfolk, Illinois. He's the owner of the property at 4101 Fountain Square Place, and he is in favor of the Alex Stoller and FHR Illinois application. The second letter of support is from Richard Silverman, MJKF SOW Real Estate Holding Company, 1622 Willow Road, Northfield, Illinois. And he is the owner of 3901 Fountain Square. And he doesn't give any texts, he just indicates that he supports this project. And the next item is going to be an opportunity for anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to this request to come forward. If anybody here would like to speak out in opposition, it's okay. Moving on. This is no need for rebuttals. Do you have any objections? I'd like to ask the applicant to make their final statement, please.
Just want to say, you know, we're, we're excited to be a part of Waukegan and we agree, Commissioner, this, this is, this is going to be great, obviously for us as a company, but this is going to be great for Waukegan as well. And we appreciate your support and look forward to a very long relationship with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, then what we're looking for is a motion. We're going to take them separately. First one is zoning calendar 2723, request for variance for fence height at 600 Lake Hurst Drive. And what we're looking for is a motion to either recommend approval or denial of this request. We have a motion.
Mr. Commissioner, I make a motion to approve zoning calendar 2723 with a variance of fence height for 600 Lake Hurst Drive.
This is a motion to recommend approval by Commissioner Bill. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Griffin? Griffin? Griffin?
I'll pass.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
How?
He's recused.
He recused, yes. Motion carries.
Do we want to go back to Griffin?
Mr. Griffin, did you want to, did you want to vote on this or you're going to, you just want to pass? You just want to pass?
Is that an abstain? Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Griffin, are you abstaining?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain, okay. Thank you. All right, next item is zoning calendar number 2724. You know, these might sound like just technical differences, but there's a reason for the wording. Next item is zoning calendar number 2724. This is a request for a site plan for a permanent casino facility at 600 Lake Hurst Drive. What we're looking for is a motion to recommend either approval or denial of the request.
I'll make a motion to approve zoning calendar 2724, the site plan for the permanent casino at 600 Lake Hurst Drive.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson to recommend approval.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bill. Do we have any further discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Griffin?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck with your project. And the next step is going to be Community Development Committee, Tuesday, September 5th. In this, it's going to be on Tuesday rather than Monday because of Labor Day. It'll be in this chamber at approximately 5:00, 5:00 P.M. Thank you. If Commissioner Howg is around, he can come back in. I don't see him. Can you see him? Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll wait till we see if Commissioner Howg is still here. Yeah, he's got to be here, all of this stuff is still here. Here he comes. Okay, good. All right, next item on the agenda is zoning calendar number 2725. This is a request for a map amendment from CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture R2, single-family district at 36955 North Northern Avenue. And we ask the city to give their presentation.
36955 North Northern Avenue is currently outside the boundaries of Waukegan. They are looking to annex in to the city, but in order to do so, they would also have to rezone the property from CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture to R2 Single Family Residence. The annexation approval goes through the Community Development Committee and then finally council. So by the time this application, map amendment application goes to Community Development, that the annexation will be presented as well. Just to give you a rough idea of where the property is, as you can see on the left, it's just outside the boundary, but it is adjacent to the city of Waukegan. We have Beach Park on the north. And then that area that's not colored and it's a tannish color, that is currently on Incorporated Lake County. To just zoom in, it is on the east side of Northern Avenue, just south of Blanchard Road and north of Wall Avenue. The reason for annexing into the city is that they are currently on well and septic, but they are having issues with the septic system. And Lake County has told them that it does not qualify for repair, so their only choice is to annex in so that they can get city utilities. In front of you is a utility map of where our stormwater and sanitary lines are currently located. The orange is sanitary, blue being water main. So as you can see, those two lines end right before their property. So it would be an easy connection to both sanitary and the water main line. They have been in contact with our city engineer, so they are aware of this connection. Connecting to city utilities is at their own expense, so the city would not be paying for anything unless we are extending and looping around these two lines to where we have on Northern Avenue, the sanitary and water main. But again, connecting to city utilities, once they're annexed in and the map amendment is converted to R2, then they would need to pay. So you have a few options. If annexation is approved by city council, rezoning this property to R2 Single Family Residence would make the current use conforming. If annexation is approved by city council, but the map amendment is denied, this residential property will remain legally nonconforming in the CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture District. If the annexation is denied by city council, then the map amendment will be voided.
Mr. Bill.
From my day job, I, I've ran across this before in the city of Tyler Park, and, and I know that water and sewer, they don't like to make a dead end. So this is basically the connection to the adjoining system that's already there, making a loop out of it probably would be more effective. That's up to the city planners, of course. But did you, well, you heard me. So I'm just wondering, the fees and stuff like this, will this be a levy fee that would be just assigned to their property that they would have to pay before the, before the work starts or after? How does that work?
Before.
Okay.
Of course.
Thank you.
And I do want to point out that once one property connects, there's the opportunity of other surrounding properties that are currently not in the city connect as well. So there was a talk of looping this around, having the opportunity of those on the west side to also connect. But again, this is just a talk, nothing permanent.
So you're actually having conversations with the other property owners near, between Blanchard and Tyler?
No, but the residents around it did get a notification of this map amendment pending the annexation, so they are aware of this connection. So perhaps they, it clicked in their mind that they're, they have that opportunity to connect, but we are not talking to any residents currently.
So a request for annexation has to be made by the property owner or would the city consider annexing those couple of blocks?
There is an option that the city could proceed of forcing annexation, but currently we are not looking into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Sure, Mr. Haynes.
What, if any, would the Planning and Zoning Department say would be a negative to including this residence in this loop or to allow them? It doesn't, in what I see, I see no negatives, but I'm just curious if there's some I'm not aware of.
Any negatives for?
To allow them to connect, you know, presuming the annexation is allowed, to allowing them to connect to the water and the sewer.
I don't see any negatives. I mean, adding one more property and adding connection would actually, would be selling more water. Also, by expanding the boundary, again, it'll expand the possibility of other properties annexing in as well because they would be adjacent to this property. But I don't see negatives.
Because the cost is there by the residents.
Correct. Everything would be out of their pocket. And again, once they're annexed in, they are subject to any zoning ordinances that we have. Any code violations would be done by the city and not Lake County. So they would have to comply with everything.
Any other questions for the city staff? Okay, I'd like to ask, who's going to present on this? Who's the petitioner? Okay, are you all going to be speaking? You're objecting, okay, I just want to know who the petitioners are. Three of you? Okay, what I'd like to do is to swear you all in, please, in case any of you happen to end up speaking on this. Okay, please stand. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth? They all answered in the affirmative. Okay, please come up to the podium and as you speak, please state your name and your affiliation to this project. And also, please make sure that you sign the sheet before you leave the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mike Adelman. I'm an attorney, practice in the real estate area, and I'm assisting Anna and Antonio Rilo who bought the single-family residence at 36955 Northerly Avenue, December 29th of 2020. They closed, but... who bought the single-family residence at 36955 Northerly Avenue December 29th of 2020. They closed between Christmas and New Year's. And unfortunately, it was only disclosed to them that they were buying a house with a failed septic system the morning of the closing, and their option was to abort the purchase, which wasn't really a viable-
Excuse me, just a second, for the record, I want to mention that Commissioner Rivera has just arrived, has joined the meeting. Thank you, please proceed.
Sure. So aborting the closing wasn't really an option, and instead, the attorneys and I was not their representative, when they purchased the property, worked out in agreement, set aside seller proceeds and escrow to repair the failed septic system. Clearly, we were in the middle of winter, and it took a period of months before it was pursued and discovered that Lake County would not approve the rebuilding of the failed septic system because the property didn't meet current code requirements for them. So our option, our sole option was to annex, request annexation to Waugnagin and connect to the water and sewer, which you can see is about 60 feet away from the property. So consequently, we've met with Noel and her staff, and we've applied for annexation. It's our understanding, annexation, if approved, brings the property in at CR Conservation Recreation. So we're here before you tonight requesting a map amendment to approve a zoning upgrade from CR to R2. Properties currently zoned are 1 and unincorporated Lake County. The surrounding properties, you can see, are all R2 in Waugnagin, so the zoning we're requesting in the map amendment tonight is compatible with the surrounding zoning. We have a draft amendment, city attorneys have suggested some revisions, we've agreed on a draft annexation agreement, talks about connecting to the utilities. It does not address the looping, and I understand the looping, I was an alderman and I planned commission and zoning myself where I live, so I understand the desirability of it. I don't know if the cost of that would make it prohibitive for the Rilos. There just may not be sufficient funds set aside in escrow, and then it presents all sorts of other issues. But that's pretty much the thumbnail sketch on why we're here before you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And by the way, the Rilos now, they've lived there since December 2020, they've had to pump their septic tank three times now at about, on average, $400 a pump out. So they're anxious to be annexed and connect, and Mr. Rilo's kind of an artisan with cars in his retirement, he's gonna rebuild the garage, and just looking forward to becoming residents of Waugnagin. Happy to answer any questions?
Commissioners have any questions for the petitioner?
I just have a question for staff regarding the comment about the cost of looping being potentially prohibitive to the resident. We, as a, as the city of Waugnagin, would we, we wouldn't ask that resident to pay for that cost of looping, would we?
You're correct, Commissioner. If the city engineer and the water utilities superintendent opt to loop the system, that cost would be borne by the city. It would probably be done at the same time that the utilities were being accessed for this connection, but that burden would not be placed on the residents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, I'd like to ask if there is anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Okay, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else here who would like to speak out in opposition to this request? Please step forward. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name and your affiliation to this-
Gene Willis. I live on Blanchard, and reason, I'm here for, in behalf of our neighborhood, object and reason being, if it's gonna, if you get city water and sewer, if it's gonna affect our property, if he's gotta go buy our property, it's gonna cost us, it's gonna cost us for him to have city water and sewer. That's my question. And I've talked to the people in the neighborhood, just got these letters, and they've signed them, and they've had them authorized and sent in their objection themselves, because we don't want to pay for something that he wants.
Can anybody answer that?
Just to clarify, are you asking whether the taxpayers will pay for his connection?
Right.
Is that the question?
If he has to go buy our property.
No, he would pay for the connection from the existing line to his property. Or they, I'm sorry, the property owners would pay for the connection.
Where's it coming in, at Blanchard or?
So if you look at the screen up there, she's showing you that the orange line is the sanitary sewer, and the blue line is the water main, so, and this dark square is the property with the white background. So they would connect from their property there down to that sewer line and that water line that's nearest their property, and they will pay for that personally, out of their funds, whatever their source of funds is for that.
Hey, go on, Blanchard group.
Nope, everybody would keep their same connection, and there won't be any additional cost for anybody. It's not like a special service area or any of those things, it's a direct connection for the property owner, that the property owner will pay for.
All right, 'cause I've lived out there over almost 50 years, and my septic and sewer is fine, and I just had my septic checked last year in September, and it's fine, so I don't wanna have to hook into city water, 'cause that's gonna affect your taxes, I'm sure.
Are you currently in the unincorporated area?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so the city can only require that properties within the city boundaries connect, we can't require anybody in the unincorporated area to connect. However, if somebody who was unincorporated wanted to annex to Waugnagin, like the Rilos do, then they would have the ability to also connect, but you're not required to if you're in the unincorporated area.
We won't be forced to connect.
You will not be forced to, as long as you stay unincorporated. If you come into the city, you will be required to, that's our ordinance.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the gentleman? Okay. As we have an opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant, I think I would all handle in this discussion. The applicant would like to make a final statement? Okay, then moving on, zoning calendar number 2725, we are looking for a motion to recommend either approval or denial of a map amendment from CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture to R2, single-family district, 36955 North Northern Avenue. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve zoning calendar item number 2725 for a map amendment rezone for 36955 North Northern Avenue for the Rilo family.
Commissioner Haynes makes a motion to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Next step for you will be the Community Development Committee, Tuesday, September 5th, in this chamber at approximately 5:00 p.m. You can check with city staff for the final time on that. Thank you, and good luck. Okay, next item, item V, V2-23 Vacation of the Right-of-Way Hazel Street South of Court Place. Who's gonna be presenting?
Evening, commissioners. So V223 is for the vacation of the Hazel Street right-of-way. This is brought to you before by the Puerto Rican Society. This piece of property is currently part of their parking lot, and it has been a parking lot for many years.
Everyone, please take your conversation outside, we're having a hearing right now.
So this is the vacation of the right-of-way of Hazel Street, south of Prospect Drive, it's between the Genesee Street and Sharon Road and Lake Street and the Waugnagin Park, so it's just south of the ravine. This property is in our downtown lakefront overlay district, kind of on the southern end of our downtown. As you can see from these aerials, the highlighted red piece is the part of the property that they are looking to vacate from the city. It is about 70 feet by 40 feet piece of land, just south of Prospect Drive. The land is currently used and maintained by the Puerto Rican Society as part of their parking lot, and they intend to continue using it as their parking lot. This area is in the B5 Central Service District. It is adjacent to B3, which is our general commercial district, as well as some R7, general residence district, to the south of it. The approval of this vacation would result in the ownership of this property being transferred to the Puerto Rican Society and the property being on the tax rolls. Denial of this by city council would result in the right-of-way remaining under ownership of the city and off the tax rolls. Any questions?
Is the Puerto Rican Society not for profit?
They are. Yes, they are paying taxes for the properties that they own.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners or city staff?
So on Genesee Street, oh, sorry, on Genesee Street, I'm familiar with this, this property. Is there a way to really lock that off right now with a fence or something, because it almost looks like there's still a road there. I know there's not, I know that it's, it's being used for parking, but I, I do think having some sort of barrier on Genesee Street might be helpful. That's all, it's a comment.
Are you talking about the, kind of, that access to Prospect Drive off of Genesee?
Yeah.
Kind of where my cruiser is, okay.
Yeah.
That part of the property is not being considered for the vacation, but that is something that we can look at on the zoning side in our department, yes. But not for the sake of this approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill? I have a question as far as first responders, do they still have full access to everything that they had before?
Yes, nothing is, they have not proposed any changes to the site. It has been part of their parking lot for many years, and they are planning to continue it as part of their parking lot.
Thank you.
Anything else from commissioners? Okay, I'd like to ask the applicant, please step forward, who's gonna be presenting on this? Well, what I'd like to do is to swear you all in, just in case any of you are gonna be asking questions, are you gonna be speaking? Okay, okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth? Okay, please proceed and state your name and affiliation to the project. And also, please make sure, before you leave the podium, that you write your name and information down there.
Carmelo Rivera, I'm the president of the Puerto Rican Society.
My name is Diego Vega, I'm the vice president.
Okay. Please present your request.
Okay, one thing is, we're trying to get that, because we're gonna fix our parking lot, and every time we do that, we do that part too. So every time we do that, we're spending money on something that don't belong to us. And we're asking the city to give us that piece of property so we can have more parking, and then since we fixing it, we don't want later on, after we fix it, and they tell us that we cannot use that as our parking.
So we're gonna, if I can add, we're gonna resurface that whole parking lot area, and that's, could be a problem. I don't know if we have to get a permission from the city to do that, I imagine so, so that would alleviate that, that problem, and it would look kind of weird not resurfacing that spot. It's a 40 by 70, I believe, 40 by 70-foot section, so. If you guys would be so kind and let us have it, we'll take good care of it for the next 100 years. We've already done 50, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, please.
If I may say something, it is true, that piece of property is very useful for Puerto Rican Society, and they've been maintaining it for, like Mr. Vega said, they've been maintaining, like Mr. Vega said, for the past, you know, 50 years of existence, so. They just want to try to do things the right way, legally, so, and this is the process. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments or questions for the commissioners? Okay, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Is there anybody here who would like to speak out in opposition to this request? Okay, would you like to make a final statement?
Please give us, you know, two, so we can take-
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm just following the format. All right, in this case, then we'd like to ask for a motion to either, to recommend either approval or denial for vacation of the right-of-way Hazel Street, South of Court Place.
I recommend approval of V dash 2 dash 23 Vacation of the Right-of-Way Hazel Street, South of Court Place.
Motion by Commissioner Rivera to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Do we have any further discussion on this motion? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Griffin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck for the next 50 years.
Thank you.
Next step is going to be the Community Development Committee, Tuesday, September 5th, in this chamber at about 5:00 o'clock, and that is the last item on this agenda.
Chairman? Can I just say something? The Puerto Rican Society has been doing a lot of work on the exterior of the building, and it's looking great, and it's noticed, thank you.
They do a great job with their property.
Thank you for supporting us also.
Thank you. Anything further? I'd like to ask for motion for adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rivera?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. This is just meeting number one. We still have meeting-